Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us for a meeting of the Tulare County Board of Supervisors. We will begin today's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. We will be led today by Supervisor Valero.
We find me including our nation's flag. Ready, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Amy. All right, item number one on today's agenda is Board of Supervisors Matters, and we will start with Supervisor Townsend.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everyone. On the 20th, I had a meeting with the Valley Adult Day Services Group over in Porterville. That's a senior daycare center. So they are kind of interesting. They fall right in the middle of the bubble on this, on the whole COVID shutdown thing. So they've been really struggling. We're just working on some ways to see if we can help keep them active over there in Porterville. And they're also looking at reaching, well, they do serve Visalia as well. But they have some plans, and so we were kind of brainstorming with them a little bit, just a way that we can keep them, keep them operating, get them through this because their clients and their clients' families are really begging them to stay open. So if you hear about Valley Adult Day Services, that's a great group to reach out to if you'd like to help at all with senior daycare and keeping that alive. On the 21st, had the San Joaquin Valley Regional Policy Council meeting and continuing to plan for the, what would be a Washington DC trip, which is now going to be a series of Zoom calls over, over a few days. And just putting together all of the sort of lobbying points, platforms to speak with our federal representatives on. And I think we're coming together pretty well with the Eight Valley Counties on things like transportation, air quality, water, shed also entered into the conversation the other day. So those will be priorities as well, and we're really well represented in Tulare County. But I think we're all on the same page as far as the Eight Valley Counties. Been taking a lot of calls about the fires up in the castle fire and the shotgun fire. And want to thank Chief Norman, I see him in the back there about, I'm not, have you slept at all? Or not much, yeah, not on the road, I hope. But anyway, he's been back and forth and letting us know what's going on, as well as Cal Fire's been keeping me informed. And the Forest Service, thank all the people that are up there working on it, kind of holding the line, making sure that fire doesn't come up over the, over the hill into the populated areas of Camp Nelson and Ponderosa, Alpine Village, La Coya Crest, all of those. And I know the sheriff and deputies have been up there as well, just with the voluntary evacuations going door to door and telling people what's going on with the fire. Tonight, there will be a virtual meeting talking about the fires. It's, I guess it's going to be held out there at the Forest Service office. And then we'll get the, be able to log on and see what's going on to get updated information. But thanks, everyone, that's taking care of that, and thank you, Chief Norman especially, for keeping us informed and doing the hard work. Thursday coming up is the Government Affairs Committee meeting with the Porterville Chamber of Commerce. We'll be updating them and also getting about things going on in the county and then getting updates from, again, our federal and state representatives and tribal representatives as well. So always look forward to that. And on the 28th, this Friday, Sierra View Medical Center Foundation Board, I'll be having a meeting with them. And they are, of course, working with, with the Sierra View Medical Center Hospital. We typically are raising money for them to buy new equipment, things like that. So it's interesting to see how the foundation's going to be doing this year. We're trying to support the hospital in these, in these difficult times for hospitals right now. There is a, there is a planned golf tournament to raise funds on October 2nd. So they're tentatively holding on to that date, and we'll be talking about that on Friday. And then on Monday, the 31st, Habitat for Humanity also served on that board for the Building Hope in Porterville. And also planning a golf tournament for October 9th and still holding, holding out hopes for that, for that date. It's the main fundraiser for the year. They have went to a virtual birdhouse auction for the whole county, the Kings Tulare County Habitat for Humanity. And so you can find out about that online if you'd like to support them because that meeting or that fundraiser get together has been canceled, and so they're just doing it virtually. So if you want to help and want to go online, you can look for Habitat for Humanity Birdhouse Auction and hopefully make some donations there. Buy a birdhouse. All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you very much. Supervisor Valero.
Well, good morning Tulare County. This past week, I have been fielding questions about our small business grant. Again, many thanks to the Workforce Investment Board for your frontline efforts in making this work. Looking forward to recognizing these businesses and organizations with monies that will get them through these difficult and challenging times. I also had a meeting with the Executive Board of the Rural Communities Resource Center out of Orozco. They've been working hard at providing food for various communities across the North County. I appreciate their efforts to maintain food equity and resources during this time of need. I met with the Government Affairs Committee Dinuba Chamber last Wednesday, where I gave an update on the county's COVID-19 statistics. I also shared some of the projects we're working on and the various resources we are offering and partnering with throughout the county as well. On Thursday, I participated in the Kings River East GSA Governing Board meeting. Not too much business for this meeting, other than approval of various minutes, grant reimbursements, professional services deemed needed, and updates on matters affecting GSA and legislation. I want to thank our Sheriff's Office and the many organizations involved for this week's food and mask distribution in the community of Monson-Saltana. Looking forward to connecting with the community through this event. I also want to just give a shout out to our RMA staff. The first Starbucks in an unincorporated area in Tulare County is in Goshen, California, and it just opened last week. I was there for the travel center groundbreaking, and last week's visit brings it to completion. Thank you for investing in the community of Goshen. This is just the beginning of that community that is really looking to thrive and continues to do well with the investments coming in. And so I also got to reflect on Grastella Martinez and her tireless efforts to improve this area of the county. Projects like these are because of her initiative. And many thanks, again, to the Tulare County Resource Management Agency for seeing this project through. A big shout out to our Elections Division for your work in providing a safe and secure 2020 election. You have secured at least 12 ballot drop boxes throughout the county, and thank you for doing that. As I share with people, the county is in the business of providing options for our voting public, and you are doing your job in making sure this is possible. Thank you. I also want to commend Caltrans for its work along the 63. This road gets heavy traffic with many people going to and from North County. And this past week and a half, road construction has been busy, and they are almost near completion. So again, thank you for your investment on this road that is heavily traveled. And then lastly, I want to use this time on the dais to bring attention and awareness on the struggles we still face with COVID-19. At the onset, onset of this pandemic, the focus was on our skilled nursing facilities because that is where the spread was found most. Now, the conversations have been somewhat different. The people getting sick and dying are now agricultural workers. And what I surmise about this is this: one, people are still gathering for large family parties on the weekends; two, a lack of quality healthcare among this sector; and three, the working conditions they face by gatherings at the workplace and in vehicles to and from. It is my continued hope that our efforts, resources, and collaborations will help reduce the spread and encourage our families to take every measure possible, but we need to do so now. And that is all I have, Chair.
Thank you. Supervisor Shucklin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, we had our Task Force on Homelessness and got an update regarding Project Room Key, which is the program where we are housing those unsheltered in Tulare County that are vulnerable and/or COVID positive. And something that has come of that, as you may have heard, the Housing Authority has purchased one of the hotels that we have been using, the 99 Palms, and they will be renovating it, and that will now become permanent supportive housing. So as I've said in the past, through the dark cloud of COVID, we have a silver lining where we will be housing some of our unsheltered. I was fortunate enough to take a tour last Thursday of the 99 Palms. And Chaz Felix and myself, our homeless initiatives program coordinator, took a tour. And it needs some work, but Jim and Cory, who are boots on the ground over there and helping to manage the program, have, have a great vision for, for what will come. So I want to thank everybody for that. We are also, Project Home Key is a new, a new program by the state where they will be granting money to counties to purchase more of these types of older hotels or motels that we can use as permanent supportive housing. I do want to stress, this is not a shelter, an emergency shelter. This is permanent housing. So we've heard a lot about vouchers. We have vouchers from HUD, but we have no place to put folks. We've tried to work with landlords to, to accept these vouchers. This is now going to be helping with that situation. So it will be permanent supportive housing with wraparound services. So I'm very excited about that. This afternoon, I have a Visalia Property Owners Association meeting, hopefully if they can set up a call-in option for that. Wednesday morning, I will be attending virtually my Tulare County Economic Development Corporation meeting. And then on September 2nd, I will be doing a State of the County virtual video with Gail Zurich, the President and CEO of Visalia Chamber of Commerce. That will be at noon, and that will be broadcast out, and folks can sign down and ask questions, and I'll be giving some updates. And then lastly, on my list, I have, again, thank you to Fire Chief Norman. And please, I hope, you know, I know our resources are running thin throughout the state. Our guys and gals are doing a great job, so please, you know, send out our support and prayers for their continued safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Supervisor Crocker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District met. And a couple of things of note on that, during that meeting is the state and the feds are requiring us to take action against under fire char broilers for certain restaurants that utilize those. But we delayed that decision, so we will not be doing anything in the immediate future regarding those, specifically because there is not, the technology really isn't there to implement a, a cleaner option for restaurants. And really also because of COVID-19, that we know that restaurants are already hit tremendously, and having an additional burden right now is, is not the right move. So that decision was delayed. Also, because of all the fires that are happening going around, the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District has a lot of great resources. They have an app that you can download for your phone, Valley Air App. I highly recommend it. I've done it, and you can check in on air quality. It updates on an hourly basis as far as what the local conditions are, and you can place multiple deals on that. They also have some interesting maps and visuals as far as what, some of the smoke that's coming from Northern California, how that's impacting our area specifically. This past Monday, yesterday, the Tulare County Regional Transit Authority, we met briefly to take up a contract with the City of Porterville. We voted to have the City of Porterville help to administer the authority and, and begin some of that process. So they were going to be helping with some of the day-to-day operations and moving forward in an, in an interim basis. I also attended the Farmersville City Council meeting last night and specifically discussing Deep Creek Cemetery, which is part of the Exeter Cemetery District, and possibly tying in to the city's water service there. Deep Creek, they lost their well during the drought and never could afford to put in a new well. So they've been having issues as far as upkeep at that particular site. So it looks promising that, that there may be a solution. The city seems to be a willing partner to help out that particular site. Next week, on Monday, we have an East Coia Groundwater Sustainability Agency that I'll be attending, and we'll be looking at, a lot of talk that's going on right now as far as water markets and what that looks like for our area. And so I anticipate that we will have further discussion around those things. And as my colleagues have already stated, lots of good stuff on small business grants and lots of questions and people inquiring about that. So kudos to all the staff. And Adam and your team have done a phenomenal job, and people are very appreciative of, of those. And as well as all the good work that Chief, that you're doing and, and the men and women of the Fire Department, hats off to you and appreciate what you're doing, not only here in our backyard, but all over the state. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. A couple of things I wanted to go over. First of all, I do want to reiterate thoughts and prayers with the Fire Service right now. I know that your lines are stretched incredibly thin up and down the state. And I think the last I saw, there's over 600 fires burning throughout the state at this time. So definitely keep the fire sector in your thoughts and prayers as they go through this very difficult summer. Also wanted to thank the Workforce Investment Board for all of their work that they've done. I think that they've done an outstanding job in reaching out to businesses in Tulare County impacted by COVID-19. And I also want to thank the local chambers. The local chambers have worked really, really hard to get the word out about this program. I know specifically in Tulare, Donette has been incredibly active. And I thank her and her staff for actually going beyond Tulare. They actually reached out to all of the unincorporated areas through contact with our Environmental Health Department, making sure that they were able to reach out to areas that didn't have an organized voice, like a Chamber of Commerce, to make sure that those businesses too were included in the small business grant program. So thank you to all those who have really gone above and beyond to make this program a success. This week, tomorrow at 8:30, I have a Retirement Board meeting. And that's a public meeting that anyone is welcome to attend. And then tomorrow afternoon, I want to thank the county staff and the Health and Human Services Agency for their continued cooperation and outreach and efforts to assist with the Tulare County Fair. That is a program that is highly in question this year, but at a very minimum, they're looking to work hard and put on at least a livestock auction for the kids to make sure those animals are fairly and lawfully graded and sold to, to benefit the children, but also to comply with laws and regulations surrounding that industry. That's all that I wanted to specifically cover this morning. We're going to move on on our agenda. I do have a specific request due to another meeting slash presentation to actually take up item three before item two. So I will go ahead and do that now and call forward Mr. Adam Peck to receive an update from the Workforce Investment Board regarding the COVID-19 Business Assistance Program. Adam.
Thank you, Chair Vanderpool, Supervisor, CEO, Counsel. And thank you for all your kind words on, on the work that everyone's done here. You're right, say tremendous work by staff, by partners at the chambers, the cities, Auditor's Office, IT. It's really taken a lot of people to scramble to put together something, but it's been a privilege as well because it's, it's a good position to be in too, to tell folks that they're, they're getting a little bit of, of help. I'm going to provide a brief just update on where we stand after the application period closed at 5:00 PM yesterday. So the Board authorized the extension of the application period. And this is a look at the unique applications submitted because, as I mentioned before, there's some duplicates. People have incomplete applications and they resubmit. So that, in terms of unduplicated applications, that additional period of time netted 301 more applications. So you see, it stayed pretty steady and just like before, once we get to the deadline date, a lot of last minute submissions. And so that, that was, 25% of the applications roughly came in that additional week that, that was provided. So as we try to think about what the applications look like, I, you know, we were at 1294, I think the number was, when I, from the previous deadline, but those are total applications. The equivalent, once we finish out, is that top number, 1,622. I'll probably stop using that number because it's, it's deceiving because about 1,396 are unduplicated, meaning they, they, those don't include, count people twice because they submitted an, an incomplete one and then submitted another one. So if you deduplicate that, and then about 1,199 were, were, met initial eligibility. Some people filled out, asked the eligibility questions, and it wasn't eligible. It still submitted it as an application, even though it was an ineligible application. So the, when you look at that they met initial eligibility, then, then sometimes they didn't have, they had delinquent property tax, or they had a few different things that kept them from, even though their first questions were eligible, that they weren't considered for that. So that left us with, as we stand today, 972, which have been approved or are still, as, you know, we've been looking through, there's a whole process of making sure that they're spinning on allowable things, making sure the documents match up, sending it over to auditors, making sure property tax. So some of, there's a number that are in a bit of that process. So they've either, either been approved or still processing. That's where we stand, 972. Now let me look, and the last thing I'll show is just what we have sent out Friday evening, because we said we were going to move forward on those that were completed and ready to go. We were going to move forward in getting those, those agreements in order. So on Friday evening, we sent out 657 applications. There'll be another group, smaller group go out today, and then there'll be another run, several other runs later. But just to show, in motion right now, agreements that were sent out for signature, we're using DocuSign for e-signature process to get all these things in. 657 agreements for a total contract amount of, of almost 3.3 million. So that is what is, so the difference between the 657 and the 972, so we still have about 300, and I would guess a good chunk of those, because they've met initial eligibility, they're not duplicated, a good chunk of those will, will be added to this 657. I did some analysis to look at what percent, how the percent distribution of eligible applicants were from the initial pay, initial period to the additional week. And we did see more diversity from, in the supervisor districts. So there was about a 10% in, of the group that applied in the last week, about 10% lower in District 3. Sorry, Amy, but you, you got a good share of it already. And other districts had a, a higher percent of that distribution. So you'll see that in future, once we, once we initiate additional agreements, that it would, there will be some change in that balance. So that's where it stands as of today. It just closed yesterday evening, so we're still, we end up kind of splitting into different areas because we have folks that are trying to work now on securing the agreements. We have folks that are, there's a process by which all these checks get cut, that IT and Auditor's Office have been incredibly helpful with to, to make that happen as efficiently as possible. And then we'll continue to process those that have applied. If, if we set, I don't, I don't remember what deadline we set, but given the fact that if you applied by the initial deadline and it was incomplete, you had some opportunity to say, hey, this W9 wasn't signed, can you resubmit? That, that opportunity will be afforded to the applicants that applied like yesterday. So there, so there will be some period of time that we will still be getting, you know, application on a, on a closed basis. It's no longer open website, but we'll allow them to resubmit if they need to change their narrative a little bit, if they needed to upload, change the upload document. So some of that I'll be going over the next week with the idea that, that, that once we get to next week, we have a more solid number of who's actually getting funded, and we'll finish out the contracting and the, the payment process for those applicants. Subject to your questions, that concludes my update.
All right, Supervisor Shucklin has a question for you.
No, I don't have a question. Just thank you. I, I helped a few folks with the application process, and I just commend how streamlined and easy it was for, for folks to do. So thank you. I'm, I'm a little surprised, I'm kind of happy in a way that we didn't have to do the lottery system and some folks missed out who would otherwise qualify. But I was a little surprised that we didn't hit that mark. So other than that, thank you. Thanks Cass and all his staff and all of your staff. Thank you.
Thanks, Adam. I appreciate your effort and all the work that the partners put in as well. It's great to see the number of businesses that we were able to help so far. I think that the initial allocation amount of right around 5 million is probably going to be the target that we're going to be hitting when all of the applications are finalized. So a great job to you and to Jason for working together to set that threshold when we established the initial allocation of the CARES Act funding. So you were pretty close and pretty accurate. And we have to remember too, I'm, I'm not so concerned to see, you know, which district gets which amount and which district gets, you know, less. I think that all of the business and customer bases within Tulare County move in between districts, and we're all up here to work on behalf of the entire county. And this is a significant investment in Tulare County businesses that will help them get through this very difficult situation. And I also am very confident too that there are a significant number of businesses in Tulare County that have already received other aid through the PPP or idle programs. So I think that through the various programs, we've been able to significantly cover and reach out to the businesses that needed assistance during this time. So great job and hope your next meeting goes well.
Thank you very much.
Take care, Adam. Thanks. All right, we will now go back on our agenda and take up item number two, which is a request to receive an update from the Health and Human Services Agency on COVID-19 status and response efforts in Tulare County. Mr. Lutz.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, CEO, Counsel. I'm Tim Lutz, Health and Human Services Agency Director. I'm here today with at least, I would say, some positive news in the direction of our metrics on COVID. So our cases today are at 13,609 from, compared to last week, up 891 cases, or 7%, while that's still a lot of new cases, certainly from a percentage growth basis. The, the best percent that we've seen in, in weeks. Our deaths unfortunately are currently at 216, so that's an additional 10 deaths over last week's report. Our recoveries do continue to increase, currently at 12,502 people who are considered recovered. When we look at our weekly cases, and that's where I say we can really start to have those a little easier comparisons on, on week to week. August 24th week, we show a 38% decline in our cases from the prior week, acknowledging that we, we know there was the system glitches with the state data. That week might have been uncharacteristically high. If we take the average of those three weeks that encompassed the, the data error at the state level, our case levels are still down 25% from that average. So we're really seeing the, the lowest case growth numbers that we've seen in about five weeks at this point. at this point, so we definitely will take the positive, recognizing that we are, in terms of our case rate, we did show a small decrease there, 563.75 was last week. This week, we're projecting 535.2 per 100,000. And I will put an important caveat there of, because this is a 14-day cumulative, continues to backcast at those 14 days, we're still seeing, because this is based on report date, we're still seeing the state data glitch. What I would expect over this next week is we'd see, assuming everything else being equal, and we continue on the trends that we're seeing, we should see the state data air start to disappear from that data and get a real picture of where our case rate is. And we continue to use the report date because that's what we've started with. We feel it's, it's a little more effective measure for us, but we're also giving you guys both, so you can see where both are, recognizing that episode date is going to change much more, much more on the more recent information as that information gets updated during contact investigations and tracing. Our positivity also is going in the right direction. Our lagged positivity from last week, 14.3%, our unlagged or initial rate this week is 11.6%. And we would expect that to continue to adjust downward somewhat as more of the negative cases get entered. That's the right direction, but it still remains high relative to where the state's 8% threshold is. Then our effective also showing improvements again, I'm now calculating at .82, which shows stable or decreasing growth in cases. So again, taking in totality all of our metrics trending in the right direction. Case rate obviously is still extremely high, particularly relative to where we were at in May and June. We're seeing a lot of numbers that were similar to where we were at in May and June, except that case rate piece, and so we want to continue to see that starting to really trend down. And really, it just reinforces the need to continue the direction and the efforts that all of us are doing right now on social distancing, masking. I appreciate Supervisor Leroy's comments on get-togethers, and that continues to be a significant source of our community spread. Unknown variables in terms of those types of variables that will impact the direction of this. We do know daycares, daycamps are now operating at much greater levels because school is back in session, and a lot of times in order to work, parents need to have their children in either a daycamp or a daycare. So that represents kind of that unknown variable for us, where if we start to see more outbreaks, it's going to set us back to where we were middle to end of July. So again, stressing the extreme importance that we need to continue to stay vigilant, that this disease has continued to show us that the minute we let our guard down a bit and feel like we're getting ahead, it rears its ugly head and really, really causes large spikes again. So we just want to continue to stress the importance of following the guidelines and the measures that are laid out. Hospitalizations corresponding with our decreases in cases have also continued to decrease, going from 68 to 56 hospitalized COVID-19 patients, a 17.6% decrease. And the last time we saw this level of hospitalization was in late June. So I'm shifting now to some of the updates from the state, and we were expecting yesterday, but it sounds like it's going to come out today, where the state's releasing updated guidance on children cohorts. The importance here, it applies to 0 to 18-year-olds, and applies to all youth in supervised environments, schools, daycares, daycamps, after-school programs, and the like. And cohort is being defined as a stable group, not more than 14 children or youth, and not more than two supervising adults who stay together for all activities without mixing with other cohort groups. This guidance for cohorts applies to all counties regardless of their status on the monitoring list. And what the intended goal behind the cohort is providing a means for some more normal types of activities that are more group-intensive, so music classes, art classes, playground activities, those types of activities where it's really hard to effectively completely socially distance those kiddos. But it, by maintaining the cohort structure, it makes it a lot easier to manage disease spread across the various cohorts. The guidance does indicate that those cohorts can be on-campus for learning and services, but the number of students brought in under that cohort arrangement per those sites should not exceed 25% of the school enrollment size or building capacity. And so what the likely prioritizations there would be is students with learning disabilities, students with individualized education plans or IEPs, and other groups with additional more intensive in-person learning needs. Then if there's no questions on cohorts, I can go to the next piece, which is the county monitoring list or dimmer switch. We're expecting sometime, I don't know if it's going to be this week, next week, but the state did give us a preliminary indication that they are going to make the changes that they've discussed to the monitoring list. Specifically, they're moving toward a tiered framework instead of the on-off switch with four tiers within that framework, red, orange, yellow, green. I think that the goal there first, we're trying to address some of the widespread concerns about the inflexibility perceived with the monitoring criteria and limited information that a on or off provides, whereas it kind of shows you relatively speaking where you fall within that metric, whether it's green as in everything looks really good, whether it's orange approaching risk territory, those types of signals. The state again hasn't indicated when they expect it to become effective, but I know that we're supposed to have a couple more calls this week with California Department of Public Health to discuss kind of the criteria and the framework. Key changes that were discussed is they would be looking at updating that list weekly rather than their daily updates. They, and this remains nebulous, and I'm particularly interested in how they're going to roll this piece out, but there's supposed to be a shift from our opened and closed factors locally for some of our industries to a broader agreement locally about where specific industries maybe fall within this tier, with that recognition that if you have certain industries that are a significant source of your spread, but then you have other industries that really are not contributing to that spread at all, we have few cases, it is just causing more harm to close the industry that's not spreading illness to the community. So our data is going to be crucial in that endeavor to be looking at where are significant sources of spread coming from, and how are we trying to address those. So it sounds like at least a little more targeted industry engagement and a little more flexibility at the local level, but again, this is all subject to change and kind of some of the preliminary discussions that have been had. One notable change, jurisdictions must wait 21 days before changing restrictions within a sector under these new criteria. And I would note that this, because the education waivers are outside of the monitoring list, I don't believe this would change the education waiver 14-day. This seems to apply toward industry sectors that are tied to the monitoring list. And they are also looking to add some type of a health equity metric, though that has yet to be defined on what exactly that's going to look like. Looking through kind of their preliminary snapshot, I don't think a lot of the metrics themselves will be changing. We still have the 100 cases per 100,000 population over 14 days, the test positivity rate at 8%. But they are looking at some acknowledgement or factor for testing volume, I think going back to comments that a number of board members have made and asked about in terms of the correlation between test volume and positivity. And so I think the state acknowledging that there is some of those concerns, and they don't want to disincentivize kind of that very targeted testing towards symptomatic areas which impacts your positivity rate, I think they're trying to make some adjustments there, but it again is not clear what those are going to be at this point. On the school waivers, so at this point, we have received eight K through six school waiver requests. The majority of those have been private schools, although we did receive Outside Creek Elementary as a waiver request. We also have received two higher education plans, Colchester Quays and Tulare Adult School. And then we, Public Health was notified of two daycamps in operation and another three that are in the stages of development. A caveat there is because Health and Human Services does not provide any oversight to daycamps, nor does the state license a daycamp. It's very likely that the number of daycamps operating is significantly larger than that. We're just noting which ones have, you know, been in contact with us or indicated their intent to be operating with that model. So we continue to have our team that's in place. We're doing training with staff on kind of this rubric for evaluating the waiver requests, and then we hope to complete that this week and then begin issuing conditional approvals. If applications are deficient, we'll be working with those schools on addressing any gaps or concerns with their waiver requests.
I had a quick question with regards to daycamps. Given the fact that the state is kind of being a lot more strict with that, do you foresee that like Cutler-Rosey School District, Pixley, as well as Central Valley Christian will have kind of an opportunity to move forward, or how does that look, given that the state is a little bit more restrictive on that?
On the daycamps, you mean?
Yes.
So this truly is a wide, wide hole in kind of, I think, that the net of the intent behind no in-person instruction. The state has yet to close that hole at this point. We continue to see requests coming in. I know that the state has voiced concern over the number of daycamps that are popping up, but in terms of upcoming guidance beyond the state, you know, reaffirming it stands that it feels those should not be a substitute for in-person instruction with a credentialed teacher. Beyond that, it's not clear if they're going to issue any updated guidance. I would, I, there is definitely a risk there that infrastructure will be developed to go toward these daycamps, and then if the state turns around and says they're no longer going to be allowed, whether there's going to be a grandfathering on that, or whether then it's going to be back to where they were before of either operating a daycare out of the location if they can get a license, or continuing to full-distance learn.
Can I ask another?
Yeah, sure.
So in that case, would you then redirect these school districts to kind of focus on a waiver as opposed to focusing on daycamps?
Yeah, and again, keeping in mind that the waivers will not be in effect until we reach the metrics, but my suggestion really is, schools that are wanting to have students onsite, they really should be going through the waiver process. One, the waiver process is going to address any concerns on their operations, whether they're operating as a daycamp or not, and get them in a much higher stage of readiness for when our metrics are allowing in-person instruction again. So I definitely would encourage any school district, even if they are operating a daycamp, to be looking at the waiver process and getting that information to us. All right. If there's nothing else for the schools piece, on Porterville Alternative Care Site, our current census actually is at seven at this point. I know last week I had reported that they were no longer accepting any new patients because of the wildfires and Calmat Resources being assigned to frontline firefighting to assist on that side. They're currently staffed to handle 10 patients. When the census dipped below 10, they did reach out to us this weekend and indicated that they would take Tulare County Hospital patients up to, you know, reaching that 10 census. So we actually did have another admission this weekend, given the very low census at that site. And then on Quiadeltas, the Department of Defense Hospital staffing this week is the team's last week onsite. Tomorrow would be their last working day, and they're being deployed to a new assignment. Then our total cost to date quickly is at $4,856,000. And then our Project Room Key statistics, 99 individuals were served by Project Room Key last week, all but two were COVID-negative. And then we provided a total of 461 nightly rooms. Our invoice cost to date, $626,551. And then lastly, so as we kind of transition again toward our broader response, and we look at the role of our Community Care Coalition and our Coordinated Care Operations Center, I wanted to highlight some of our underserved community engagement, and specifically talk about our Healthy Harvest Program. Next week, HHSA and partners will be presenting to the Board in conjunction with the CARES Act funding presentation that the county administrator is bringing to you. What they're going to be doing is providing the larger overview of the Healthy Harvest Program and all of the different efforts and interwoven funding that we're helping to coordinate for our response. In terms of the Healthy Harvest Program itself, the program will provide state-paid rooms for anyone in agriculture line of work affected by COVID that need non-congregate living spaces to quarantine and isolate. They will also be providing wellness checks and wraparound services, so that means wraparound services with the entire household to determine what types of supportive measures might be needed if that person was not able to work. And we are leveraging the existing Community Care Coalition because we already had the partners in place. They were already working on coordination when funds came in, it was a natural fit. So then when this particular program came about with the Central Valley Community Foundation, it was a really good fit and an opportunity for us to try and move quickly on this. Proteus has been identified as the primary housing liaison, and the California Farm Worker Foundation will be acting as the primary call center for referrals within the program. And then we are engaging the broad group of community partners, RFRCs, United Way Sea Set, and other CBOs to really be working on the referral type of agencies coming in where they're already working with this population. We're partnering also through this with the Ag Commissioner and the Farm Bureau for the engagement with farmers themselves, and then continue to look at all of our partners, whether it be the health side, whether it be the charity side, all of those pieces coming together to really try and provide a comprehensive coordinated plan. And then lastly, testing scheduled tomorrow for early market. Fortunately, the weather seems to be holding, albeit air quality is horrendous with the fires, but we will be doing the testing event But we will be doing the testing event tomorrow in early mart, also distributing food boxes, water, school supplies, backpack, masks, resource materials. And then Allensworth, the second event, is scheduled for August 31st. And that concludes my report. Be happy to ask questions or answer questions.
All right. Supervisor Valero.
All right. So I just wanted to go back to the statistics and kind of how we do our case demographics. One thing that I do know that I think we are missing is the sector or the industry by sector, because it goes back to what you just mentioned earlier, whether or not we're going to close certain sectors with high increase and then open up other sectors that haven't seen. And so I, for example, I know other counties have included industry sector, which does not indicate exposure being occurred at work or school. So it's just making sure that we identify that. So whether it be in agriculture, correctional setting, education and childcare setting, food services, office management, professional, retired or unemployed. So do we see that coming forward with the county as well? And how will we go about tracking those that have been exposed or have been positive when this first COVID hit? So was there any mention of like, what sector do you work at so we can input that into the data? Just wondering, yeah, how will we, we will be able to indicate that moving forward?
That has been a crucial hole, I would say, with our data. With the new state system that we're using, or newer now state system that we're using, we're capturing that far more consistently. The challenge is most of the time that's being done during the investigation process because it's typically not, not laid out. If they're going to a primary care, typically that's not going to be captured in information that comes over to us. So it is dependent largely on whether they are willing to disclose that to our investigators. But I will say with, with the concerted effort with the state system and it being a specific field that staff are filling in, our data for our more recent cases, which really is most relevant for our coordinated response, is getting far better. So we'd be happy to start to list out that information we have with the recognition that there will be a, probably a fairly large percentage of unknowns in that and recognizing that we've been working to fill that, that hole in our data.
Yeah, and I should have prefaced that by saying, yes, the statistics that I have seen for other counties do have a large percentage of unknowns. But again, we're still getting to that arrow in the right direction by identifying those categories and sectors. So that way it helps us in the future with regards to what sectors are most impacted. Thank you.
Supervisor Crocker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Tim, for another good update and happy to see some positive results as far as case numbers coming down and our effective looking very positive as we continue to go in that direction. I just, I'm looking forward to the update on harvesting for Hope next week. And I just encourage you guys to, the staff to work with. Farm Bureau, I know they've been in the talks already and other farm groups as, you know, as it relates to certain process, how that's going to work, how it will be implemented. I think their, their input will be valuable to that, to that initiative. As we're looking at, and I appreciate all the work and as it relates to day camps, something that I think is very important, recognizing that we don't have jurisdiction over them currently, the state's allowing for it. And so giving that flexibility within the guidelines that are currently provided, I think is, is really critical. We've seen a lower amount of tests go through our public health lab and we've also, also looking ahead as far as, as, you know, what the waivers look like. If we get to a point where we're allowing waivers for schools to reopen, is there, are we looking at anything to help with some of the requirements that schools are going to be required to do in order to implement and have a waiver to reopen, such as testing? I know there's, there's very strict testing requirements. And will we be able to help facilitate that, either with our own public health lab or help facilitate having testing machines onsite on campuses? Has there been any thought on any of that?
There has been a lot of discussion statewide, down to locally. I think you hit the nail on the head of the, the largest concern point for a lot of health jurisdictions is the testing requirements for schools because the volume is intense. I mean, it's, knowing the Herculean effort, I'll call it, of, of doing our baseline testing of all of our skilled nursing facilities and continuing to keep up on that. And the population for the skilled nursing is far less than our, our combined student and teacher populations. And the understanding is there's, there is a level of flexibility within those testing plans. A lot of counties are encouraging their schools to form partnerships with the local healthcare providers, so a community clinic in those areas. Those are the same partnerships that we're already forming when we're going out for our mobile testing. So I would think we would want to continue to expand in that area, but also recognizing that there is going to be a financial cost for, for all of that testing that may or may not be borne by the planned participants within that, within that school district's health plan or a, you know, unfunded cost that ends up getting passed on to the schools. So that is a huge concern, and I don't know that there is a unified plan because testing has been a scarce resource. We are seeing some improvements on, on the testing turnaround times. We're also seeing improvements on some of the testing supplies. But we also know that statewide testing is down 23%. Locally, we're down 20% on our, on our testing. And that's kind of allowing the commercial labs to catch back up. So I do think that's a huge risk that we're going to have that I don't think anyone's completely been able to solve, knowing our testing constraints. The ideal would be exactly as you say, some type of an Abbott ID Now or other type of immediate test. And those are very hard to come by. We've been able to get them deployed to our hospitals and some of our other critical facilities. But even then, I know Quia, who has had the longest term relationship with that company and even was on that platform before it was the Abbott ID Nows, wasn't able to get all the fulfillment of the cartridges to do testing. So I, I think that would be the ideal, but it also is a ways out before we have the right supplies to do it.
Yeah, I guess more information with that, on that would be critical, I think, as far as, you know, are those even affordable or is it reasonable to do that? Is the cartridge issue still an issue or has that been resolved as far as from a supply chain? Because I think, I think as, when we look at what may happen with, with a lot of small schools that may go through this waiver process when that option is, is provided, is, is having some type of unified voice and whether, you know, I think that we as a county, and I know Supervisor Valero has spoken about this in past meetings, and the County Office of Education can partner to show, here's some, you know, here's what we recommend as far as, you know, reaching these metrics. We've, you know, secured or procured some supplies. Here's, or we recommend these type of, these type of devices to help with these requirements that are there, to give some guidelines. I mean, we're, you know, we're talking about administrators that wear multiple hats. Not only are they, you know, the joke when David DePauli was at Sausalito was, not only did he, was he superintendent, principal, a school teacher, he's also the bus driver and janitor. So, you know, I mean, I think the reality is some of these school districts, I mean, that is the actual case. And, and so being able to help provide that guidance for them and be able to say, this is, this is a good plan. We can, you know, help do, you know, whatever, whatever that help looks like, even if it's just saying, these are good testing devices, recognizing there's a six-week back order or whatever, you know, I don't know. Maybe it's a six-month back order and that's not realistic. But something that's realistic that can actually help them would be helpful.
So something probably along the lines of like best practices?
Yes.
And that makes sense. And actually, I think that's a really good suggestion. Right now, we're in such a learning mode of that steep curve. But as we get experience with some of the larger schools that have come in, I think that'll benefit the, the smaller ones that have fewer resources, that we can hopefully identify that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the presentation, Tim. It's great to actually have you give this update and have some positive outlook stemming from it. So I think that's a really great thing to see. I think we have to continue to be diligent and focus our efforts to the un-hit or the un-targeted portions of the population that we haven't really yet focused upon very heavily. And I think the outreach that we are doing in the unincorporated communities, like you mentioned, early mart's event that's upcoming, and then further events in Allensworth and some of the more isolated rural communities, making sure that we have a presence there and we provide the resources. And testing is going to be a very important factor in controlling the spread in those areas. So again, appreciate the work that your staff is doing, even though testing may be down. I know that public health staff is still busting their tail and working hard during this very difficult time, not to mention given the, all the difficulties in the outside environment that we're now enduring with the fires and air quality, et cetera. So appreciate all the work that you're doing also with the school systems, whether it's operating in a day camp setting or it's going through the waiver process, whether you're public or private. It's important that we provide the guidance so that we can continue to help control the spread or also help to just benefit the children who are being overlooked so frequently today. So I really do appreciate all the work that you and your team are doing. Thank you for your continued diligence and hopefully the good news continues next week.
Thank you.
Have a great day, Tim. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on and take up item four, which is a request to give a presentation by the Rural County Representatives of California to provide an update and overview of their organization.
Good morning, Mike Washington. I just wanted to introduce the RCRC team. Our economic development staff yesterday had the privilege to meet with their team, their economic development team. So today with us is Craig Ferguson, Senior Vice President, and Terrence Rogers is the Economic Development Officer, as well as Sarah Boldnik, sorry, is the Economic Development Specialist. So just wanted to get this going and do that intro. Thanks.
Great.
Hi, good morning. Thank you. I'm Craig Ferguson. So we're, you're all aware of RCRC. You guys are members, you sit on the board. Supervisor Crocker represents Tulare County for RCRC. I believe Supervisor, sounds like you're alternate. What a lot of people don't know about is, is this company, I'm going to cover it in a little bit, called Golden State Finance Authority. And Tulare County is a member of that organization too. It's a company that was created by RCRC back in the early 90s and, and also has voting members. This particular company has members that vote. There's 36 elected officials that sit on this board. And then there's associate member counties that don't have a vote, but it pretty much covers the entire state. It's a joint powers authority. It pretty much funds RCRC. RCRC is an advocacy lobbying group. It doesn't generate much revenue. I know Tulare County pays about $15,000 bucks a year to, to be part of this organization and then receives the benefits of, you know, the advocacy that RCRC provides. So the mission of GSFA is providing affordable housing and contributing to the social and economic well-being of Californians. It was created in 94 to really focus on low to moderate income first-time home buyers. And that was the mission for a long time. And since then has expanded into, into other areas, down payment assistance, mortgage credit certificates, multifamily housing, energy efficiency financing and infrastructure financing. And as a JPA, we issue debt. We do tax exempt debt for currently multifamily projects. And the last time we issued debt for single-family projects was probably 2007, right when the recession hit. And then those taxes and bond rates never have really come back to, to be feasible, but we have still been operating a mortgage-type program to provide down payment assistance. As you can see, we've, Golden State Finance Authority has helped over 78,000 families get into a home. And this is by providing down payment assistance. That's the, that's the, the portion of funds that if you're going to get an FHA or Fannie Mae or Freddie Mac loan, they require you to come in with a certain amount, around 3%, 3.5%. The banks aren't allowed to provide it. A parent can provide it or a government entity can provide it. So realtors and banks cannot provide it. So it's, it's a, it's a good niche. We generate the funds from the capital markets. We work with mortgage lenders. They'll originate and then they'll sell those loans to us and we'll sell the loans into the capital markets. And then the revenue we generate comes back into our down payment assistance pool. And as you can see, just in California, we've granted over $567 million in non-repayable gifts to homeowners. And since 93, we've participated in over $13 billion in single-family financing. You can see the numbers for Tulare. It's families provided with down payment assistance, just over 1,460. And mortgage credit certificates, it's a little low, but Tulare joined late in the mortgage credit certificate allocation, so that'll pick up going forward. We've been in the energy financing world since 2010. When we first got into it, we partnered with the CEC and got a $35 million grant from, from Arrow Funds, put a program together with the CEC. It was very successful. We got approached by another energy administrating company to continue this effort. And since then, we've, we've provided more than 31,000 projects, whole house retrofits. And that's more than $890 million in, in project financing. Our main focus is the low to moderate income home buyers, as I said earlier. More than 50% of those participating in our single-family housing programs are minorities, much, much higher than the typical FHA, Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac. We also ensure our energy, energy programs are accessible in urban, suburban and rural communities. As I said, the JPA is the same as the, the member counties are the same rural counties as, as RCRC, but we also allow the associate members to join. So we pretty much cover the entire state and we operate statewide. How do I go back? That's right, I don't need. It was the final page anyway. We've also been giving back to the community. We were talking about fires a little bit ago and they've come back in a huge way. Our company's provided $3.5 million in assistance to fire victims just to help them find temporary housing and, and, you know, rent monies and what have you. We've also, with the affiliate firms, RCRC has, Golden State is an affiliate, and then there's another company called National Home Buyers Fund, which does similar things to Golden State, but does it nationally. And that, that entity has helped over 45,000 families get into a home. But we've also been giving back. We've provided, you know, thousands of laptops to foster youth. We fund a human trafficking education awareness program, which is, which I wasn't aware when, when we were first approached by this firm, how, how terrible human trafficking is in rural counties. I would think it was worse in the LA's and the San Diego's, but the rural counties get hit by that. So we, we fund an awareness where this company goes to, to schools and teaches children, you know, what to look for and how to be aware. And we've also helped finish a homeless veterans shelter. We funded $400,000 to, to help them finish that. So the idea here is just to, you know, give you guys an update. You sit on the board. Tulare is represented by this company or represents Tulare for this company. or represents Tulare for this company. And there's very little ever said. I think some of you may come to the RCRC annual meeting as well, RCRC and political and advocacy. But RCRC actually doesn't exist without this firm because this firm generates the revenue for it. Some recent initiatives we're getting into over the last, say, three years, we're putting a huge focus into broadband infrastructure into rural California. And we are working on obtaining some financial partners, which we're very close with. And we're going to be issuing tax exempt debt. And we're going to be going county by county to, into the rural areas, the unserved areas. So we've made a lot of headway there. And then we also, in fact, I'd like to bring Terrence up just for a few minutes just to talk about our forest resiliency project that we've been working on now, which is very applicable, especially the new fires that have just popped up. And if there's no questions, that's just an update and I appreciate your time and thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Terrence.
Good morning, members of the board.
Morning.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here today. As Craig mentioned, I just wanted to give a quick update on initiative our economic development team has been working on for a couple of years now. What we've done, Craig pointed out, you know, we've started a couple of other organizations in addition to RCRC, GSFA, NHF. We've went ahead and started another one, Golden State Natural Resources. And the purpose of this organization is to create a commercially viable use for the low-value biomass that's currently in our forests and causing these catastrophic fires. I mean, I don't need to tell this board about, you know, what's going on up there and the desperate need that the forests, the desperate need to treat our forests properly. You know, as part of this process, we were able to go out and secure a 20-year master's stewardship agreement with the U.S. Forest Service, which covers all 18 national forests throughout the state of California. We're looking to leverage that agreement to create different partnerships out in our rural. I mean, obviously, the forests are in primarily our rural areas. And we're looking to create partnerships in those areas to start treating large landscape areas in the forest, bring that flash fuels out. And as I said, create a commercially viable product that can be sold and continue the process of getting up there and treating the forests. The Golden State Natural Resources, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit public benefit corporation with tax-exempt status at both the federal and the state level. And the initial focus right now, we've had some feasibility studies. And as you can imagine, everyone knows that when you go look in our forests, they're clearly overgrown. I mean, you don't need, you don't need to go very far to figure that out. And so, you know, in looking at that, we look like we may have opportunities to finance this project. We made a lot of headway in that area. The initial focus will be to take this product and create industrial-grade wood pellets that would be exported to Japan, where they're currently paying aggressive feed-in tariffs as part of renewable goals. And there is a brochure in there to give you a little bit more of the overview. But the idea of this project is not just to end there. It's to create wood innovation campuses for alternative uses for the low-value biomass that's in the forests, diversify revenue streams by creating, you know, other use of biofuels, bioplastics, so on and so forth. That's a long-term dream. And as Craig mentioned, as part of that, you know, we plan to bring broadband, high-speed fiber optic cable to these facilities and then branch off to the surrounding communities for the purpose of creating economic and community development opportunities in those areas. So I know that's a real quick overview and there's a lot to it. We've made a lot of progress. The feasibility studies are back. We're very encouraged. We know that, you know, this is a monumental lift. But we're very optimistic moving forward that, you know, we can try to start making some headway. So.
Great. Great presentation. Supervisor Crocker?
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight a few things that I think they're specific to us. Craig mentioned some of the funds that help, help give out different programs and awareness. And the Human Trafficking Educational Series worked with all county office of eds, including Tulare County Office of Ed. That was two, three years ago that we started that program. And so some of those, those ideas were then distributed out to school districts to teach young people, you know, what to recognize as far as sexual predators and making sure that they had defensive mechanisms and all those types of things as far as bringing awareness to that, really at a younger age than I think we even realized. So that's, that was something that, again, because of the generosity and because GSFA has such a successful program, we're able to branch out into these other areas to help communities and other needs that maybe are outside of the core of generating revenue. The laptops for foster youth, I was able to participate in that when we did that a couple of years ago. That was phenomenal. We had the largest distribution out of all of RCRC and GSFA counties. And I think we were close to, if not over 100 laptops that were distributed at that event for individuals that we care for as a county. And the whole idea was, you know, how do you, how do you make sure that we're making these individuals even more successful as they go through the process of high school and into then looking for new jobs and et cetera as they gain into adulthood? I'd like, the broadband initiative is something fairly new. So we are currently working on a model that's based similar to something in Utah. And so can you maybe share a little bit more about what that looks like? And as we're kind of looking at that?
Right. There's an entity very similar to Golden State Finance Authority based in Utah. And they have successfully done what we're wanting to do. And that means they've gone out and issued debt. Their JPA is kind of made up of cities, more so than counties. And they utilize the, the cities have agreed to use certain franchise fees and taxes as a backstop in case the revenues aren't generated to pay the debt. They haven't dipped into those backstops as of yet. And the, you know, in a matter of five years, four years, they've already got over 30,000 customers. And it's an open access type structure. It's, it's this company out of Utah. They put the infrastructure in, but they're not providing the service. But they're opening it up to whoever wants to provide service. It can be AT&amp;T, it can be Comcast. But it's not, it's not like we have here, which they also had in Utah, where you've got these incumbents that kind of just, you know, you don't, you don't have many choices as a constituent. So we're working with this firm and we're intending for them to do it for us. So we're just going to partner with them because, you know, we're not, you know, not all that good at putting fiber on the ground personally. But, you know, we can work with some entities that are and they're willing to work with us. They've already successfully issued debt. We're talking the exact same banking firm that sold the debt for them. And they've issued well over 500 million in tax-exempt debt. And their, their infrastructure is successful. It's popular. The consumers love it and it's bringing in lots of competition. And that's what we intend to do. We're already having studies done. They're working with us. We're even working with a CPUC right now to try and, and they're very excited about it because they know this company. But we're hoping to obtain some funds. It's, it's called CASF. I'm going to forget what the actual stands for, but it's, you'll see that little font on your cell phone bills. They're trying to change language for us to at least use that as a backstop as opposed to us going to our counties and trying to ask for taxes, which a lot of the rural counties, especially some of the smaller ones, just don't have that where we're told to do that. So, but that's kind of where we are with that. And it's, it's, it's very well received at the state level and it's very well received. We've seen, we've seen the debt successfully issued. We've seen the infrastructure built. We've went and visited them and, and, you know, even went into those internet hut-type things. And it's, it's a good job. So that's where we are with this. And I'm, you know, I'm hopeful that, you know, if it works out at the state level, that we're going to be digging and building and having an open access just like they have. And it's a pre-foreal. Come, come join in, you know?
It's very promising. And I think that goes to the point of, you know, beyond just projects that help out with housing. And I, and I'd encourage staff that if we have any type of housing projects that can utilize GSFA, that we do that with some of our partners like SelfHelp that's always looking at different. It's a, it's a great organization that goes and helps beyond just from the housing standpoint, helping us with broadband, with forest health. We have a region-wide master's stewardship agreement with Region 8, I believe it is, for the U.S. Forest Service. So we can, we can utilize and work on multiple national forests throughout the state of California, almost all of them. There's a little bit of, that's outside of Region 8 that's on the east side of the Sierras. But good stuff. What's our overall portfolio? What's our, what's the dollar amount as far as assets that we have in GSFA? Roughly?
Roughly GSFA is sitting on about 83 million in cash. If you put the three entities together, there's National Home Buyers Fund. That's the one that does national, housing nationally. And then if you put RCRC. Annually, we put, we, we, we work for RCRC and we contract ourselves out to these other companies. And then RCRC charges these companies for our time. And that's how we allocate the funds to RCRC. But if you count all three companies, we're sitting on about 180 million bucks. So it's strong, you know, and this is why we're getting into all these other projects. Where, you know, we want to use the money the right way. We want to help the communities that we serve and the communities that you serve. You're on the board. You, you, you guys are making the decisions. You know, we come into request approval from, you know, your represented board members here. And for the most part, very, very, you know, successful and positive. And we appreciate it.
And I think that's the key point is because of the financial well-being of the various organizations, that's why we have a low membership fee. And in fact, that membership fee was waived at our May meeting for this year due to, you know, just trying to help out all of our members. So we're not even paying that. And that's, that's fairly unusual, I think, for many large organizations. So thank you for coming down to Tulare County and providing us with the update.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Safe travels back. Yep, Supervisor Townsend? Yeah. Sorry, didn't see your little chime in there. Go for it.
That's all right. Thanks for the presentation. Craig, I did want to, I mean, actually, Terrence, want to ask you a question about the wood pellet production. Do you have any current projects that are going on right now? Are you already removing fuels and turning them to pellets for shipping? Is that already happening or is there something coming up?
No, that's a great question. Thanks for asking. We're still in the pre-development stage. We've been doing a lot of due diligence on initial sites and then also exploring how the partnership will work to get to what is the most important part of this project, which to your point is getting up there and treating the landscapes. But we're still early. We're still seeking, we still need final approval from the GSFA board to move forward. And that's coming in the next month. We think we have, you know, based on our analyses, we have a lot of encouraging information. But, you know, should we get that go-ahead the next month? It's full speed ahead. At the same time, we also, as I was trying to say, I don't think I said it very clearly, but looking for partnerships out there in the, you know, in the private sector. And that's, they're, they're the best suited to do this work. And so, you know, that's, that's all part of it, moving simultaneously. We have a lot of parallel tracks we're working on right now.
Yeah, I think we can certainly find plenty of, plenty of raw material to put into that project. And actually, we do have a little bit of interest in biogasification, which also utilizes the pellets. So it's a small interest right now, but maybe we could start something.
And that's, that is the whole idea, is to continue to expand this project. I mean, we can't just look at one thing. We know how these markets change. We have to be nimble. We have to be looking down the road. And the, you know, at the end of the day, we have to treat millions of acres of forest. And there's no way we can grant our way out of this. And that's what's so important about these commercially viable projects. And I think Craig alluded to it. I think that's, that's one distinction too, is we're trying to avoid any tax money or any other subsidies. We want to make it, you know, raise private capital and use private money to make this happen. Hopefully, that's a, that's a distinction that we have and we can succeed on all these fronts.
Excellent. Well, kudos on your work.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We've got plenty of supply. We have our own economic development team. Mike Washam, maybe make a contact. And we'll be seeing a new wood pellet manufacturing facility right here in Tulare County. It'd be great. Thanks.
I met Mike last night. Great guy. Thank you.
Take care. Okay, next, we're going to move on, take up item five, which is public comment. First, I'd like to call forward our police, or our police chief, our fire chief, Charlie Norman. I was looking back there in that mask. I couldn't tell exactly who he was. So I wanted to make sure.
Police chief. I was going to say, don't use words that hurt. Good morning, everyone. Let me pull this up, make sure the right one's on here. There we go. Okay. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Britt, Deanne. Busy month, busy last three weeks in the California Fire Service. We limited resources in the area. And what we'll talk about today is briefly the SQF complex. And if you have more many uhs than usual, it's a little bit of sleep deprivation. But everybody, first things first, everybody's healthy and everybody's doing well in the field. All of our folks are working hard and staying hydrated. Wednesday evening, the Castle Fire started in the Golden Trout Wilderness. It stayed at about 5 to 10 to 20 acres and started doubling over the past several days. It hit critical mass to where we had to engage on Saturday evening, Sunday morning. And currently, right now, it's at about 15,000 to 16,000 acres. Estimated, looking at the IR, probably about 20,000 acres. In addition, it has become a complex because we do have the shotgun fire that's just north of there. And shotgun fire is in the old line fire burn scar. So probably not going to create a lot of issues for us. We have a Type 2 incident management team with a Tulare County Fire Department agency rep. On Sunday, we did an advisory, which is advisory is basically a voluntary evacuation order for Ponderosa Cedar Slope. And we did dip into Camp Nelson. We did have some warning, evacuation warning is now what's mandatory evacuation. So we'll have to hit some trigger points to move into that mode. At this point, on the incident, there are 175 total personnel, two Tulare County task force. So we have about 15, 22, we have about 30 people committed to this incident. Two helicopters, two fixed wings, a six-hand crews, and then one dozer. Met with the flight crew last night, we were meeting with them just to get some boots on the ground, IR. And first thing, I've known the pilot for 20 years. He said, hey, Charlie, you want to go up? And I said, I'm good. What time are you going up? He says, whenever you want to. I said, man, I'm busy. So the second-in-command went up. Just to kind of, strategy and tactics, let me get this up here, what we're looking at. Most of the burn, and we have some mission misalignment with the Forest Service that I've been very candid with, with as well as ourselves. They are a management agency, Forest Management Agency, whereas Cal Fire, Tulare County Fire, every municipal agency in the state goes direct on things. So looking at these things and this growing and them not having any natural barriers to tie in things, our biggest focus of concern is this hitting the community of Ponderosa. You see that? Matt? There it is. Hey, Matt, can you help me with this? Okay. I know, that helped.
There you go.
Okay. There we go. We're going mouse. We're going laser-free. Right here is our primary area of concern. Doing the IR flight yesterday, this ridge was entirely painted with foschek with a retardant. So we have some burning that's creeping down over here, but relatively manageable. Most of the open free burning is going up here to the north and the extreme northeast, kind of heading into Hocket Peak. The goal, and we do have another 2 o'clock meeting. Then we're meeting on this about every four hours, is to tie this into the forks of Little Kern, bring this up here with some crews to tie this in. Once we tie this in with the air support, this side of it and our western threat should be done. So that's, and granted, the assets at risk with the giant squaw grove are very concerning. But my concern is our communities in our mountains. So once we get this tied in, I'm thinking within the next 72 to 96 hours, we should have a better feel for what that is. And it's, even with all the tree mortality we have, as it got locked up on the ridge, we're not seeing the heavy burning. We're not seeing the torching out. Everything in the torching out is going to the north and northeast of the fire. So everything we're seeing is some back burning that's coming slowly down the hill. So we do have a defendable spot. As we look here, our trigger points for mandatory or evacuation warning are Lloyd's Meadow, Lloyd's Meadow Road. Lloyd's Meadow Road, and then the Piles Boys Camp. Those are our big protection points and should this burn into this area, then we will trigger everything. We are working with the incident management team. Sheriff and I are on the phone constantly, so we do have some good messaging to the Big down and dirty, if we can get this tied up, we should be in good shape. So, again, and I hate to say predictive services, but the next forty-two, forty-eight to seventy-two hours will be going to be pretty critical on this. We do have a community meeting tonight on South Newcomb, the Supervisor Townsend was alluding to. We'll answer any community concerns and get things taken care of, talk more about strategy and tactics. So, that's kind of, I know you have a busy agenda today, that's kind of the down and dirty of it. I really do appreciate all your support of the Fire Service. Thank you for all your support and would answer any questions with the public comment, but it would answer.
Supervisor Crocker?
Chief, do you know when the last time this area had fire on it?
The burn history, I want to say, was in the fifties, but I'm not accurate. Everything else around there, up here in these different areas, we've got the McNally burn scar.
Right.
We've got the Cabin Fire burn scar. Recent history, we have the Lion Fire burn scar. Everything with burn scars is up in this area, down in this area, but not a lot in here. I want to say at least seventy years, so.
So, if we get that line, the rest of the burning is probably more or less not so bad as far as it's, it's needed up in the, in the other areas?
Yes. If we can tie it into that anchor point on the Little Kern, we should be done. We should have containment on the southwest end, so, which is our primary focus.
Thanks for the update, Chief, and thank you again to the work of your men and women in partner agencies, doing a great job keeping our community safe.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Thanks, Chief. All right, are there any additional public comments on any item that is within our jurisdiction but not on today's agenda? Any phone comment?
Mr. Chair, we do not have any phone comments.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, now, we are going to move on, take up real quick our consent calendar, items eight through twenty-two. Item nineteen will be pulled and brought back at a later date. I believe there's a question on sixteen. Is that correct? Mr. Crocker, do you have a question on that?
I think I, I got that resolved, but I just want to ensure that we've had issues earlier in the year when we did something similar and maybe if just our CAO can mention it, whether or not those issues are somewhat resolved or Bryce is in the audience. If we have those issues resolved as far as.
You want to come forward real quick, if you don't mind, real quick?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, Mr. Britt, Ms. Peterson. You have something particular you want me to speak to about this?
I just want to make, I know there was confusion when we've, you know, we've done this before, we did this most recently as the spring, and I think from the industry there was confusion as far as how, you know, we, we set the emergency order to take the compostable animals and so, you know, but then there was issues as far as scheduling and figuring that out. So, I'm just, want to make sure that that has somewhat been resolved, also recognizing that, and I, I had already asked this question, I think, last week during the presentation, that we're still moving forward as far as a longer-term solution at the landfill.
I'll, I'll address the immediate concerns and the answer is yes. We've had quite a few discussions between the CAO, myself, Andrew with OES and the others. And the primary concern, in my mind anyway, is our ranchers and our, our dairymen didn't really know what to do with any animals, they could not get to the rendering plant. As of the last action you mentioned earlier in the year, this board has, has set the county in a good position, in a good direction, in my mind again, where we now have that direction. Where we're going, there are a few different options, but the primary option, again, for animals that cannot go to a rendering plant immediately, are to be composted on-site, a relatively easy matter. You know, they just simply are put in an area that's, they're taking care of any quick lining and then they're covered up. So, those carcasses start to decompose, which is frankly, a good thing. We eliminate and prevent any kind of risk of disease or contamination to the herd or any of the staff working at the facility. Then, a few months down the road, after those animals have been decomposed and a lot of that risk has been eliminated, working with waivers and stuff, and I'll let others get into that if you like, but that compost can then be brought to our landfills. And that was all made possible by our CAO getting out ahead of this and getting the emergency declared, following the quarantine notice, which is essentially an emergency quarantine notice, by the CDFAs, veterinarian staff. So, in my mind, we're, we're on a good path. Thankfully, the weather broke, the rendering plant is still in operation. I think the impact this time is going to be very minimal, but it could have turned south on us really quick. Thank you.
All right. No additional questions on that. We will take up any other additional questions on the consent calendar. Any public comment on the consent calendar? All right, seeing none, Chair will entertain direction.
Consent calendar?
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Shuckley and a second by Supervisor Valero. Please vote. Consent calendar passes unanimously. We will get back to our regular agenda and take up item six, which is a public hearing, request from the Resource Management Agency to approve an application for funding from the State Department of Housing and Community Development, 2020 Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Response Round One. Mr. Washington, this is a public hearing, I will open it at this time.
Good morning, Chairman, Board Members, CAO Britt and Deanne. In June, HCD released an eighteen-point-seven million dollar NOFA of allocations to California non-entitlement jurisdictions. So, Tulare's grant allocation was in the amount of four-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars. Program income funds need to be expended before you can spend any dollar of a grant award from a, through CDBG. So, we currently have an income balance of about four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars in our program income. We're requesting to commit up to six-hundred-thousand dollars. By authorizing six-hundred-thousand dollars, it will allow any additional program income funds that we receive to be able to be allocated in this program. So, ultimately, we're looking at between nine-hundred-and-twenty-thousand to one-point-oh-nine-million dollars for this program. Today's public hearing is a requirement of the application process to solicit input from citizens on, regarding the proposed application as well as counties' programs and use of program income. The notice was published in the Visite Times Delta on August nineteenth. The use of CDBG funds must meet one of three national objectives, being benefit to low, moderate-income persons, aid in the prevention or elimination of slums or blight, or meet a need having a particular urgency. So, this actually is, we're submitting it under the benefit to low, moderate-income persons, but it actually really kind of hits all of those when you, when you think about it. The eligible activities for the, for the funding include public services, public facility improvements for healthcare facilities, public facility acquisition if it increases healthcare facility capacity, acquisition and improvements of homeless facilities, economic development business, and micro enterprise assistance. Staff is proposing substantive payments for rent, mortgage, and utilities for up to six months to low and moderate-income households directly affected by COVID-19. This is a new program. Staff will be working on guidelines and program forms and applications and will return at a later date to approve the guidelines, the grant agreement, and a sub, sub-recipient agreement. Staff is proposing to enter into a sub, sub-recipient agreement with self-help enterprises to administer and market the grant program. County staff is suggesting a really robust outreach, including social media and spots on Spanish-language radio to reach our most underserved populations, to really get the word out. Participants will have to self-certify any and all assistance they've been receiving. Self-help will verify and document that. Currently, HHSA has two similar programs funded through the CARES Act, one administered through the United Way and the other through CSAT, both of which will be expiring in December thirty-first. This, this grant will have a one-year term from the time we actually receive the funds. So, this will be coming online about the same time those are, are kind of ending. It's a very critical time right now because all of these safeguards and safety nets that have gone up for elimination or postponement of evictions and all that, those, those are starting to run their course now. So, there's a big buildup and a need currently in them, in, in our communities of what might be coming with, with these restrictions being dropped and lowered. There might be an avalanche of evictions potentially and, and, and potentially foreclosure. So, anyway, that's what we're proposing. We're thinking that it'll last through into late 2021, but it will end once the funding runs out. So, that's, that's what we're doing. Staff requests that your board hold a public hearing and at the conclusion of the hearing authorize the dismissal of the 2020 CDBG CV1 application as detailed in your agenda item. So, if you have any questions or to open the public hearing, or you are.
Public hearing's open, but I'll take any questions from the board before I open it up to members of the public.
I'll, I'll wait till.
Okay. Any questions from board members? Okay, seeing no questions, are there any public comments related to this item? Any comment on the phone, Madam Clerk?
No public comment.
Okay, seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the board and close the public hearing, bring it back for action. Questions, action?
Well, just, just comment, just comment. Thank you, Mike, for the report. I think it's, I'm very supportive of this and I think it's a, a great idea to have us partner with self-help because they really have the, the feelers out into the community and, and have established relationships with folks that I think this, this could help. So, I am in support of this.
Okay, Supervisor Crocker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And looking at what some of the eligible activities are, I, I think I would have liked to see something that we're already doing, and I know we are doing this, and so this is enhancing the ability to help with rental assistance or mortgage assistance, but looking at, you know, the acquisition or improvement of housing facilities for homeless, I think that would, you know, looking at the recent acquisition of Tagus Ranch or Ninety-Nine Palms, you know, things like that, that, you know, help facilitate things that are already going, I, I think would have been, would have been very good or helpful. So, was, were any of those things considered?
Yeah, absolutely. We were trying to coordinate with, with the purchase of the Ninety-Nine Palms. Timing-wise, unfortunately, the Housing Authority moved forward. We, before you can do, before you can do funding through CDBG, you have to do CEQA, NEPA, and the timing just wasn't there for that. So, we've, we've, we've had many multiple discussions with the state staff on this. So, there will be additional funding coming forward. We, we're at a time crunch to get this application in. It's, it's due by the end of August. If we don't secure our allocation, those funds will roll into a pool and it'll be a competitive grant. So, we don't want to give up any, any opportunity. We had lots of discussions with, with the state. A lot of it got mixed. We, we talked about small business revolving loan fund and, and building that. They were encouraging for that, but they, but we don't have a program currently, so they said no not to use this to establish it. So, if we'd had one, we could have used it for that. We looked at potentially hiring substitute teachers maybe to help, or retired teachers to help with Zoom and, and those types of things. But timing-wise, we just didn't have that ability to coordinate with TCO to see if that was something. But there will be future funding rounds where we're looking at potentially utilizing some of this money for the improvements that need to be made down at Ninety-Nine Palms or other types of activities, so.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Supervisor Valero?
Yes, so I'd just like to reiterate what colleague Shuckleyon said with regards to this support. I know that I personally have received several calls with regards to potential evictions, but this speaks to a broad base, which is whether you are a renter or a homeowner. So, again, just kudos to you and your staff for bringing this to our attention and for reaching out and reaching in to support the most vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. I know that this is something that's very important and I appreciate the fact that you've identified this is filling a potential gap that is going to be existing in the near future, but definitely support the broad range of potential qualifying activities that could be supported by this grant. So, appreciate you moving forward with this and happy entertaining motion.
I would move approval.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Shuckley and a second by Supervisor Townsend. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. Now, prior to taking up item number seven, and we're going to take a brief five-minute recess to allow a quick restroom breaks and set up for the item seven, public hearing, the administrative appeal. So, we will return in five minutes. Did you forget where your chair is? Did you forget where your chair is?
My chair.
Yeah. Where's, I know, I thought he was up there. All right, the board is back in session at this time and we will now take up agenda item number seven. This is an administrative appeal hearing to consider the wonderful company's appeal of the Resource Management Agency's issuance of building permits number A2000938 and A2001028 to Arrow Pistachio Inc. The public hearing is now open. Before I begin today, I would like to lay out the procedure we are to follow. Since there have been no evidentiary hearings at the department level, the process today differs slightly from our standard appeal hearing. However, before I describe the procedure, I'd like to ask if either party intends to call witnesses during their presentations. If so, I ask the witnesses to step forward at this time so our chief clerk can swear them in. Are there going to be any witnesses today? Okay, turn it over to you, Madam Clerk.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm under penalty of perjury that the testimony you are about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay. If, now, I will give each party an opportunity to call cross and reexamine the witnesses if desired. Members of the board will then have the opportunity to ask either party or department questions, if any. Once the questions are wrapped up, the appellant will present its closing argument, followed by the respondent. After closing arguments, I will then invite members of the public to comment on this item. Please note that your time will be limited to three minutes. At the conclusion of public comment, the board will close the testimony portion of the hearing and meet in closed session with its legal counsel to discuss potential litigation resulting from the administrative decision, if desired by the board. The board will then reconvene in open session, at which time, the board may issue a tentative decision directing RMA to come back with supportive findings of fact at a later date. Depending on the circumstances, we may ask the parties to prepare post-hearing briefs before issuing a decision. Do either party? Do either parties have a question before we begin? Okay. No questions. I will now call for the Resource Management Agency to make their presentation. I'll turn it over to you.
Chairman Vanderpoel.
Buck.
Supervisors, CAO, counsel. I am Aaron Buck. I'm the Assistant Director for the Resource Management Agency, and as stated, this is a matter of an appeal, an administrative evidentiary hearing for the wonderful company appealing a decision by the Tulare County Resource Management Agency to issue to ARO Pistachio Incorporated building permits numbers A2000938 and A2001028. By way of background and as a brief overview, I'd like to talk a little bit about the history of this project, but before I get to that, just a, a quick overview. The Resource Management Agency issued building permits A2000938 and A2001028 on May 30th, 2020, and June 2nd, 2020, respectively. Building permit A2000938 would allow ARO Pistachio to install three pistachio storage silos with catwalks and stair system, and it references minor modification numbers MEM 17-034. Additionally, building permit A2000938 would allow for, I'm sorry, A2001028 would allow for eight pistachio storage silos, four dryers, one receiving pit, one pre-cleaning, cleaner, a wet hauler, and also reference minor modification 17034. Pre-entitlement history. On February 26, 1958, the Planning Commission approved setback variance number PSV 687 for the replacement of a water transmission line within the setback area through resolution number 1345. In 1976, the original pistachio grove was planted in the 78-acre retired parcel APN On March 2nd, 1977, the property was zoned from A1 to AE40 as part of the Rural Valley Lands Plan Zone Study. In 1983, operation was lawfully constructed prior to the use permit requirements of the 1986 ordinance, ordinance number 2720. And here is an image of the site back in 1994, which was legally constructed at the time with no use permit requirements. In August of 1986, the AE zone was amended by ordinance number 2720 for the curing, processing, packaging, packing, storage, and shipping of agricultural products requiring a use permit. Upon adoption, facilities expansions of non-legally non-conforming uses required a use permit. In September of 1996, building permit number 89602611 was approved while special use permit was filed in September 17, 1996. No violations were on record in RMA's records regarding this matter, but the property owner was noticed at the time that they were building at their own risk before the use permit was approved. In November of 1996, an initial study negative declaration for PSP 96074 was prepared and approved by George Finney on November 14, 1996. On December 12 of 1996, zoning administrator approved PSP 19-074, which included all 78 acres in its current use to utilize at that time approximately three-point acres portion of the property. Section 16 of the zoning ordinance number 352, expansion limitations heard by the ZA did apply to the non-conforming additions in office building that were approved at the time. However, they did not necessarily apply to storage facilities, including silos, AE40 Zone, section 9.7.3, titled these as incidental and accessory structures in use. So, silos, haulers, et cetera, were considered either equipment or incidental and accessory structures in uses. The ZA PSPs were more than half, were only heard by the ZA at the time where more than half of the project is produced by the operator. The use was limited at the time to 11 employees, including the owner, or there was an increase by 50% within a five-year period. There are no conditions of approval in the PSP 96-074 that relates to those restrictions and, or coincide with the limitation on the cases the ZA could hear at the time. So, there's no conditions of approval in the record to limit it to those terms. As far as after that time, future actions and entitlements and zoning consistency, PSP 96-074 was for the already-built building permit, 89602611 commenced in 1996. The county has never found, in this county, a site abandoned unless done so by the owner or the neighbors for use permit purposes. And mostly, the county treats use permits like maps, subdivision maps, parcel maps, and only requires use is started within two years, which this obviously was, started before the permit was approved. There is no indication in the Google Earth Maps records or within the RMA files for any request to make a finding of abandonment or revocation of the use permit. Condition of approval four of PSP 96-074 states, "Any structures built shall conform to the building regulations and the building line setbacks of the ordinance code of Tulare County. In so far as said regulations and setbacks are applicable to such structures, except as modified herein. By approving the minor modification with the location of the silos noted across the property lines, this condition of approval is effectuated." The approved PSP 96-074 site plan applied to both properties as owned by the owners of the company, as it was originally permitted on APN 319-130-019, which then became 319-130-022 and 319130-023 per certificate of compliance number PCC 13-033. The county has always allowed deviations from the original site plan and agricultural setbacks for building permits through the plan check process as long as they are reasonable. The 2020 building permits do not extend beyond what was originally approved in 2017 through the PSP 96-074, MIM 15-006, MIM 17-034, or MIM 18-009. As you can see from the Google Earth Maps, the site has always been in production. There are small changes at this location over time, but again, nothing in the records that would show the county that the site has not been utilized. And there are no violations that have been issued towards this APN number. All projects had CEQA documentation done. PSP 96-074, as stated, had an initial study and a negative declaration, and since then, all the minor modifications has, have, had notices of exemption along with them, so they have been documented under CEQA, and we have followed the policies and practices of the state and of Tulare County in, in processing these projects. As you can see from the site plan in 2018, it was expanded consistent with those minor modifications and with the existing use permit. Here's an image exhibit of both the building permits that have been approved. And that is the end of my presentation before you today. Obviously, the witnesses have already been sworn in for councils, but what the request to you is today that we hold an evidentiary administrative appeal hearing regarding the wonderful company's appeal of the Resource Management Agency's issuance of both those building permits. At the conclusion of the hearing, close the submission of the public testimony and adjourn to closed session to consult with county council. And following closed session, reconvene in open session, deliberate and make a tentative decision on whether to grant or deny the appeal and direct staff to prepare written findings in support of the board's decision to be presented for board's consideration on September 15, 2020.
All right, thank you for your presentation, Aaron. Do any members of the board have any questions of staff at this time? Okay, seeing no questions, I will now invite the parties to make their opening statements, if any, beginning with the appellant.
Masks are not.
You don't need to wear your mask, you're fine.
No, I know, but I, I probably just take some, I take off, and they don't work great with hearing aids.
Yeah, we want to make sure we can hear you, so.
Yeah, and I need to be able to hear you as I put those back in. I'm sorry. Good morning, Honorable Supervisors. Maria Foy of Latham &amp; Watkins, on behalf of Wonderful Company and Wonderful Citrus, which own and operate farming property in Tulare County and are proud to employ hundreds of Tulare residents. We appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today regarding the appeal of the two ARO building permits. Simply stated, ARO does not have the requisite land use approvals to support the issuance of the building permits, and the building permits do not comply with the county code. Allow me to walk you through the land use issues. In 1996, ARO sought and was issued a zoning administrator's special use permit for a pistachio packing facility on about four acres of its 80-acre site. Pursuant to the county code and board resolution, the zoning administrator had the authority to issue the special use permit only because the facility was a small, local facility with at least 50% of the nuts coming from onsite and less than 10 employees. It is clear that it is a foundational condition to the special use permit that more than half of the product had to be produced onsite and less than 10 persons be employed onsite. The zoning administrator did not have the authority to grant a special use permit for anything but a facility that met these conditions. If ARO wanted a broader right, it could have sought a special use permit from the Planning Commission. Instead, ARO sought and obtained the more limited approval from the zoning administrator. Years later, ARO sought to change its site plans. The code allows the zoning administrator to delegate authority to the director to issue minor modifications to the special use permit. In ARO's case, the zoning administrator did so by stating, and you'll see this on your image, "Regardless of condition number one above," which just approves the 1996 site plan, "the planning and development director is authorized to approve minor modifications in the approved plans upon a request by the applicant or its successors, as long as said modifications do not materially affect the determination of the zoning administrator." That is, the minor modification must not materially affect the whole of the determination of the zoning administrator. That includes the predicate conditions and findings that are part of the zoning administrator's determination. This is consistent with law and logic. You cannot delegate more authority than you have. To allow the zoning administrator to delegate authority to make modifications that go beyond the limits of its own authority would circumvent the authority of the Planning Commission and this board. The code and the county's resolution establishing limits on the zoning administrator's authority clearly limited the special use permit to the source of the product and the number of employees. ARO has sought a series of minor modifications, each time stating under penalty of perjury that the capacity of the facility and number of employees were not substantially changing. What's before you is one of the applications. All of them are pretty much the same, and you will see that number five on the application asks the applicant to mark, if any of the following are appropriate, which are modifications that affect any of the following, including number of employees, is the first one, and intensity of the present use, the last one. In all of ARO's applications, none of these were marked. In turn, with each minor modification, the director determined that the requested modification is in conformance with the intent of the approval for the special use permit based on the following grounds, one of which you will see says, "It will not result in any substantial increase in capacity, employees, and traffic." Again, the code and the board's resolution limit the special use permit. ARO stated under penalty of perjury that the proposed changes were not altering those limitations, and their director approved the minor modification with those limitations. The building permits before you are for development that goes beyond the limited scope of the special use permit. Here's an image of the site recently with the ongoing construction. Clearly, this is not the same local small facility permitted with the limited zoning administrator's special use permit. The county now knows with the building permits before it that the building permits exceed the special use permit because ARO has repeatedly admitted that it will process nuts from off-site well in excess of the 50% limit and that it has 100 or more employees. These are excerpts from declarations that are submitted with ARO's papers. The building permits cannot issue without the proper land use approval. ARO admits that the building permits will exceed the limits of the zoning administrator issued special use permit. The permits must be revoked. In addition to being a limited special use permit, the special use permit itself is void. Condition 11 to the special use permit states that the special use permit shall automatically expire and become null and void two years after the use for which it was granted is discontinued or abandoned. County staff says it relied on Google images to confirm continuous use, but the images show that the site remained static, not that there was any use. Contemporaryous government records, on the other hand, show that ARO was not operating during the period from at least 2004 to 2010. Here's an image from an FDA report from 1993, and at that time, ARO told the FDA that in 2004, Medi-Arandi closed the processing plant but kept farming pistachios. In 2010, Medi-Arandi bequeathed the processing plant and the surrounding acres to Adam Arandi, and in 2011, Adam Arandi began harvesting and processing pistachios at the plant. In addition, the regional board records state that wastewater discharged east in 2002 and was restarted in approximately 2016, and the air board records show no air emissions from 2001 to 2014. Clearly, the special use permit was not in use for more than two years. And other than ARO's declarations in this proceeding, there's no evidence that's been offered to show the contrary. The facility was not in use. There's not even a single business record that's been offered, and the government records show otherwise. Therefore, the permit is void by its own terms and cannot support the issuance of the building permits. ARO has stated that none of this matters because it's too late. That is not correct. The appeal of the building permit was timely filed and is properly before you. The county cannot be stopped from enforcing the law, and the special use permit and acceptance of conditions signed and recorded by ARO state as much. Now, even if the special use permit is valid, which we do not concede it is, the building permits authorize construction that is beyond the scope of the special use permit. Building permit number A2001028 purports to authorize construction of four dryers based on minor modification 17034. Minor modification 17034 authorized 12 dryers, but the county's own records show those are already built. There is no land use approval for the additional four dryers. ARO now claims that 20 dryers were authorized by the 2015 and 2017 minor modifications. That is contrary to the express terms of the minor modifications and the county's own prior review. So, minor modification 2015 included no dryers, pistachio receiving pit and silos, no dryers. Minor modification 2017 included 12 dryers. In 2018, when ARO sought to construct four dryers, the county advised ARO that the only approval on record was for the 12 dryers approved in the 2017 minor modification. ARO had in the interim already built eight dryers without permits, so the county gave the ARO, ARO the option to permit the eight dryers after the fact using the 2017 minor modification. ARO then permitted an additional four dryers in 2018, using up all 12 dryers in the 2017 minor modification. No dryer approvals remain to support the 2020 building permits. The county staff now suggests the dryers didn't The county staff now suggests the dryers didn't need a land use approval or a building permit. Again, that is not consistent with the code or the county's prior interpretations. In 2018, the county correctly noted that land use approvals and building permits were necessary for the dryers. The county knows that the dryers are required to have been included in the land use approval and have a building permit. There is no land use approval for the additional four dryers, therefore the permit must be revoked. Similarly, there is no land use approval for the pre-cleaner and wet huller. Again, ARO says it was part of the minor modifications, but it was not. None of the minor modifications includes a pre-cleaner or a wet huller. County staff now suggests that the pre-cleaner and wet huller don't need to be part of the approved plans or building permit. Again, this is contrary to the code and the county's own interpretation. In fact, the county did require a building permit, as noted on your screen. The permits also violate the code in that they permit silos to cross the property line. While the special use permit was issued to Mr. Arandi for an 80-acre property, Mr. Arandi subdivided the property in about 2013 and transferred one of the lots, and the two separate legal lots are separately owned still and is clear from the public records. The minor modifications and building permits were issued for only one parcel, the parcel with the facility. However, the silos crossed both parcels. Here's a site plan showing the silos crossing between the two separate legal parcels. There is no application for or approval to the owner of the other parcel for the silos. While county staff now suggests that it's standard practice, it is not legal. Here, the minor modification that's relied on, the 2017 minor modification specifically references just the 1APN, the dash 22, and the building permit also just references the 1APN, the dash 22. The silos similarly are not consistent with the county's setback requirements. The code requires that everything but crops and irrigation facilities be set back 10 feet from the side property line. The building permit states that a 10-foot setback is a condition of the building permit's approval. The code requires a 10-foot yard setback, and deviation from the setback requires a variance. No variance is issued. Again, county staff has now stated that the setback is not necessary for silos. This is not consistent with the code and not consistent with the Planning Department's own comment on the permit. Finally, the building permits are discretionary and the county has conducted no environmental review. The building permits do not conform to the previously issued permit, and the county has stated that the director has latitude in what requirements are imposed through the building permit. The code is also clear that processing uses have the potential to impact the environment. That is why a special use permit is required, and there's evidence in the record that the use may result in significant environmental impacts. For all these reasons, and the reasons detailed further in our submission to the board, we respectfully request that the board grant the appeal and revoke the permits. Thank you.
Thank you for your opening. I will now call upon the respondent to present their opening at this time.
Good morning, Board. It's a pleasure to be here. My name's Christopher Brown of Dowling, Aaron, and I'm here on behalf of Arrow Pistachios, who's in opposition to the Wonderful Company's appeal. At this time, though, I'd like to turn it over to my co-counsel, Jennifer Hernandez, who will take over the full presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chris, and thank you, Honorable Members of the Board. I first feel compelled to apologize to frankly take this amount of time on this matter. This board has heard issues of critical importance, the fires, the economic and health situation, both which are very stressful. This is an effort by a business competitor to use this board to overturn the utterly routine processing of processing equipment applications in this county. It is a business competitor tactic. The record that has been developed for this proceeding is three binders, which I didn't lug up here but are on my chair. This same competitor has gone to the Tulare County Court, saying that its appeal to you is futile, and it wants the court to substitute its judgment even before this board has decided as to whether your resource staff can interpret and apply their own land use and permitting, building permitting requirements on an agricultural processing facility in Tulare County. I'm an out-of-town lawyer. Wonderful is represented by out-of-town lawyers. This is what unfortunately it's come to, where out-of-town lawyers come in and say, "You don't know your own code, your staff is incompetent, it can't be trusted, and you, the elected representatives, need to second guess and reverse their decisions to issue permits, building permits, building permits, for facility modifications that were approved starting more than 10 years ago and ending more than two years ago." The statute of limitations for challenging those earlier approvals are either 35 days or 60 days, and when counsel said, "We argue that it is in fact not timely to challenge discretionary decisions, judgment calls by your staff as to whether a minor modification is appropriate or not, as to whether a use permit complies with the zoning standards of this county or not." We're talking about decisions that are two to more than 10 years old. The building permit piece of this is not discretionary, it's ministerial. Once you have your approval, you get to use your approval, and the approval is the land use approval. Counsel argues, "My goodness, should have never been approved," based on their reading of your code. You should have had lots more detail about every possible piece of ancillary equipment in this agricultural operation. You don't know how to administer your own code. That's ridiculous, and in fact, the courts have consistently shown huge deference to local agencies and other agencies who interpret and apply their own codes on a routine matter, an agricultural processing facility for pistachios that comes before this board all the time. The binders speak for themselves. The paper is all there. Counsel said nothing that was not already in the binders. The binders were reviewed by your staff. Your staff knows what it's doing, and in fact, you'll note that counsel for the Wonderful Company wasn't here last week when you spent a good amount of time considering an appeal for the approval of the set-in processing facility more than twice as large with neighbor concerns. We don't have neighbor concerns here. We didn't have the Wonderful Company worried about how the planning staff did or didn't do its environmental review or didn't administer appropriately the details in that permit or that application. This is a business dispute, and also in the record is the fact that there is a Mongo, technical legal term, Mongo lawsuit between these parties, the Assemi Group and the Wonderful Company, pending in Fresno, over competitive issues. I need to apologize on behalf of my profession that it's come to this, that it's legal. It's not good, it's not acceptable, and even the California Supreme Court has said you cannot use, for example, the California Environmental Quality Act as a tool to advance a competitive interest. You cannot, but that doesn't mean you can't try, and that's what the Wonderful Company is attempting to do here. We don't propose to take you back through line by line. The record that your staff created, reviewed, and decided well within its discretion more than two years ago authorized the facility that's now, as the first of our witnesses will testify before you, Mark Sherrill, who is the Director of Plant Operations for Touchstone, which is the pistachio arm of the Assemi Group. That facility is now operational in what promises to be a record harvest of pistachios. It's employing people, and it's working, and one good thing for 2020 might be a record harvest for pistachios. With state-of-the-art facilities, dryers that have received their building or their air permits from the air district, nobody's cutting corners here. This is a late-breaking competitive challenge to try to keep the facility from opening, and it didn't work. We ask you to deny the permit, appeal, and we'd also like you to hear directly from people who are responsible for this facility and committed to this community. Mark Sherrill, as I mentioned, is the Director of Plant Operations, will do a brief update on the status of the plant, and the CEO and founder of the Assemi Group is here and would like to briefly address you as well, Farid Assemi. And with that, I'll turn my time over to Mark, followed by Farid.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Board. I'd like to also thank the staff of Tulare County, the inspectors that have taken their time to come out and inspect the facility, inspect the permitting, all the work that's going on out in Terabella. So again, my name is Mark Sherrill, I'm the Chief of Plant Operations with...
Actually, do we want to, this is supposed to be just reserved for the opening remarks. Do we want to continue with this, or do we want to go back to the case in chief? I'm looking at my counsel to make sure. No, I want to get to the case in chief prior to having witnesses called forward, or I'm sorry, finish the opening before we move on to the case in chief. It's my apologies, Mark.
If I could clarify, sir, is what we have is one presentation each?
Part of the opening?
Exactly.
Okay.
And then we'll go right to rebuttal, so there won't be a quote "case in chief." This is the case in chief.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's fine. That's fine, thank you.
So Touchstone Pistachio Company was, is the newest grower-owned processor in the pistachio industry. We are owned by the Assemi family, and we were formed in 2018 and began the process of building a facility in Fresno County on Cam Avenue, which ran into some interference from the Wonderful Company. So as we moved forward, we looked at other options. One would be to look at other facilities that may be available for sale, which we did find here in Terabella. The Terabella facility fit our short-term and long-term needs and goals, so we moved forward and executed that sale with Mr. Adam Arandi. During this process, we did decide to expand that facility. The facility is going from 25 million pounds to 50 million pounds, and that project is approximately 90% complete at this time. So as Ms. Hernandez mentioned, we are operational. We ran three loads of pistachios yesterday and look forward to a successful 2020 harvest. Part of this expansion includes staffing, we're bringing additional employees into the area. We are currently staffed at about 130 employees today and anticipate being at approximately 240 at peak harvest period, which would be mid-September through mid-October. This is, this is great for the, for the community, especially during this pandemic time. To mention on the COVID portion, we have a very robust COVID action plan in place. We have also brought in a third-party sanitation company that meets, or that comes in twice a week to sanitize every inch of our facility, and we're also consulting with a local pathologist to come in and look at our action plan and fill any gaps that we may have through our, with our action plan. As you all know, this is a very fluid environment with COVID, and we're just learning as we go and trying to be on the front end of any issues that may arise. I would like to end my time with a letter that I received last week, an unsolicited letter that I received last week from a pastor in Dinuba. The letter says, "Good morning, sir. I don't know why, but I need to tell you that God has put on my, put you on my heart to pray for your lawsuit. I feel like you are David going against Goliath. My husband and I are pastors in a church in Dinuba, new beginnings. Retired New York executives and now serving the Lord as pastors to the hurting. The only thing I know about pistachios is I love to eat them. A group of us will be praying for you today and continuing until your plant is finished. Bless you all, Pastor Cheryl Nicolay." My response to Pastor Cheryl Nicolay, "I want to first thank you for taking the time to reach out with such a touching message. Some days it feels like an uphill battle. Receiving your email today lifted my spirit, so thank you for your kind words. I have often been told our journey resembles the parable of David and Goliath. We are working tirelessly for a similarly blessed outcome. I do appreciate your prayers, all of them. I believe God puts people on the path to help you carry the load of our crosses. Your timing could not be more perfect. I am a man of faith, and I do believe I have been brought to this place and time for a purpose. Messages like yours only help motivate me in my efforts. Thank you again, I am humbled by your support." We appreciate the support of Tulare County, and we look forward to continuing a long-term business in the county. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Farid Assemi.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, County Council, Resource Management, my name is Farid Assemi, 1396 West Hurndon. Thank you for your time, and I apologize to you while our country, our state, our valley is under this state of emergency amongst fire, COVID. You have to spend your time, so taking care of people's business, attending to this. To state the obvious is disrespectful, so I respectfully will not share the drama with you, but I'm more than happy to. Maybe I'll write a book one day down the road. There is no shame in accusation, is on the record in this town, in your convention center. When you find a 300 people, they wrote the story, "How are they going to take care of us with vulgarity?" That's okay. I would rather not go there, and the two minutes I have in front of you remaining to tell you a little bit about us, why we are here. But before I go there, I need to tell you, we've been in construction business for 40 years, and as you very well know, one of the most abused laws of our state is SEQA. It's very easy to abuse it for your personal gain. I am proud to tell you, in 40 years we've been in business, we have never, never abused this law for competitive advantage, never, because we would have to ask our attorneys, our employees, to compromise their integrity and ask and seek competitive advantage for us. Just out of fun, I thought I'd read what our attorneys do when they take oath of office. As officers of justice, it says with integrity, with integrity they conduct their behavior. Wonderful Company, when they were attacked in current county with abuse of SEQA, they called it extortion, racketeering. Coincidentally, they were represented by Sam Lauffer. So, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, our relationship with Mary goes back 60 years. Our family are in the business of taking care of farmers. My dad was a well droiler, my uncle was a well droiler, my grandfather was a well droiler, their cousins were well droppers. They sold tractors, sprayers... They sold tractors, sprayers. They had ranches and they were in business of home construction and farming. My mother, until she donated to charity, owns a ranch, a pistachio ranch in Raphson John in Iran that's 500 years old. I came to work for my father's friend in 1974 in the pump company in Fresno. My dad bought pumps from Flowway Pumps. And the revolution happened in Iran. My dad was briefly arrested. They confiscated everything we had and me and my two brothers stayed here. The valley, the people of family, the Fresno County, they opened their arms and their hearts and supported us through the years, for the past 34 years. I am humbled and honored by the letter of support we have received, not just from friends, from our competitors. Nichols Processing Plan, Primus Processing Plan, these are our competitors writing letters of support. We are going to be new employers, even though we've been farmers in here. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm proud to say our employees get the benefits that my children get. Everything my children can afford in their benefits, that's what they get. And that's what we're going to extend to our processing plan in here, in healthcare, dental care, orthotics, you name it, retirement plan, that's what, it is only ethical and it's only moral thing for us to do. Our family lost everything. They took everything. They imprisoned my dad. They taught us, you work hard. You do it legally, morally, ethically, but if the Lord shows your way, there is no way you're going to fail. By grace of God, we are here today. And I respectfully request for you to deny this request for rescission of our building permit, which in this, during this COVID area, will put hundreds of people out of job and their families. I thank you for your time. If you have any questions now.
Thank you. Is that the completion of the case in chief? Okay, thank you. All right, I will now go back to the appellant to call forward your case in chief or to bring forward your case in chief.
Already did, Chair. That was part of the-
Okay, so that was part of your presentation as well? And then you will have the opportunity for rebuttal now?
Thank you. Again, Maria Hoy of Latham &amp; Watkins, there's no need to respond to the argumentative attacks. The issue before you is simple. It's whether the building permits were properly issued and they were not. ARO's counsel says that once you have your approval, your building permits are straightforward and ministerial. We have shown they do not have the underlying land use approvals to support these building permits. The situation is of ARO's own making. It's not staff's fault for missing things when the applicant doesn't put forward the right information in its applications. The special use permit was a limited zoning administrator's special use permit. The applicant repeatedly stated that it wasn't exceeding those limitations and it's now saying that they are far exceeding those limitations. This is the applicant's own making. Thank you.
Okay. Rebuttal?
Thank you. And very briefly, there is no permit limit condition that says fewer than 10 employees. And this facility has long had many, many, many more than 10 employees. There is no application condition that says half the crop has to be processed onsite. That's just not the way the permits work. And it hasn't been for years. As Mr. Assemi has said and Mr. Sherrill is also quoted from, we have support letters from competitors, from members of the community. We do not support the intrusion into this county of abusive competitor lawsuits challenging land use permits or SEQA. And I am pleased, I am pleased to report that in this proceeding at least, the appellant seemed to have withdrawn, abandoned both their SEQA and nuisance claims. They claimed this plant expansion was going to be an environmental problem. It's not. A much bigger one wasn't down the street. And they claimed it was a nuisance to operate and it's not. And they seem to have abandoned those. But guess what? Those claims are still pending in front of your Superior Court Judge because that's what SEQA allows. It doesn't require a level of integrity, unfortunately, although I'm working really hard at that and have been for about 10 years. We don't think this is a complicated case. We're very, very grateful for your taking this amount of time in hearing us out. And we're extremely grateful to your staff and county council for doing such a thorough job reviewing the record and presenting it to you at the level of detail that frankly it warrants, which is not much. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from board members at this time? If there's no questions, we will move on and take up the public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on this issue. They will have three minutes to speak. Please identify yourselves and indicate your name and address. Are there any public comments to be made here today?
Mr. Chair, we have a phone-
We do have phones. Okay.
Thank you for holding. You are now connected to the board meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Your three minutes will begin now.
Good morning, board. My name is Mariah Thompson. I'm an attorney with California Rural Legal Assistance. I am here today representing my client, Terabella Voice for Change. They are a community group of residents living in the community of Terabella. We are not affiliated with either party in this complaint. We have no comment on the motives, underlying disputes between the parties or business interests. And I should note that as representatives of rural communities, farmworkers, packing house employees, and other rural families, we understand the importance of agriculture to the prosperity of the valley. To respectfully disagree with Mrs. Hernandez, there are neighborhood concerns about this facility. And my clients raised these similar concerns on the Seton case last week, and we raised the concerns here again because the concerns are the same. We are worried about the fact that the county has a pattern of approving industrial expansion of facilities without proper environmental review. Residents seek environmental review of such facilities, not only because they are required by law, but so they provide protection for residents, children, and the environment in the communities where these facilities are located. Lack of proper environmental review denies residents and the workers in these facilities the opportunity to have mitigation measures that will protect them from any adverse impact. Last week, the county approved the expansion of the Seton Processing Facility, similarly without any environmental review. It appears this week the county is continuing the same pattern of behavior. This pattern has a disproportionate negative impact on low-income communities of color such as Terabella, which is 93.7% Latino by Mexican descent, with an income of around $25,000 a year per family. These residents are disproportionately impacted by the noise, dust, emissions, traffic, glare, chemical exposure, and other environmental impacts that result from industrial processing. We believe that the county must conduct proper environmental review of these expansion projects, not just on a limited piecemeal basis, but to complete build-out, to fully evaluate the adverse environmental impact that may result from the facilities so that proper mitigation measures can be implemented. Thank you. Oh, and I want to also say, we submitted a letter to the county that discusses more of the merits of the claim, including a further analysis of SEQA as well as addressing the nuisance conditions and other issues that have been raised by both parties. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comments, Madam Clerk?
That concludes public comment.
Okay. At this time, I will close the testimony portion of the hearing and we will convene in closed session to discuss matters with counsel. We will adjourn to closed session. Returning momentarily. Okay, the board will now reconvene in open session and I will open this matter for discussion by the board. Any questions, comments want to be made before we move on to the action? Supervisor Crocker, I do have a request from you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is this the same process that we use for all other projects of similar type?
To answer that question, yes. Throughout the county, we do quite a few minor modifications of use permits that lead to building permits. So this is nothing new or out of the ordinary for Tulare County.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, Supervisor Shuckley?
Yeah, Aaron, I just, I had jotted some notes earlier that I would just want to at least bring them out there. So similar items like are being added on now already exist on this property, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And also, no additional land, other than what you, what they mentioned about going over the property line, no additional land is being taken in, in this project?
As far as it's all within the original 78 acres that were approved originally.
Okay. And then somewhat speaking to Supervisor Crocker, have we issued any other permits that would be similar to this, even within the pistachio industry?
Right. So even to Wonderful themselves, we do quite a few minor modifications to use permits in a very similar fashion. I mean, almost all of our large-scale agriculture-related facilities, we've done minor modifications for after the use permits approved.
So even the appellant has had this type of-
Yes.
-permit done? Okay, thank you.
Okay, that I believe wraps up the questions and discussion from the board. I know from my perspective, I appreciate all of the work that staff has done on this item. I know this has been very thorough and also want to reiterate that I have received several phone calls from competitors, from growers. I know within Tulare County, we have numerous that are both competitors and then also may even be suppliers for various pistachio plants up and down the valley. And I know that the comment and sentiment was very consistent in supporting ARO and even the fact that they are going to be a competitor. They still will support the process and support everything that ARO has done to get to this point in their permitting process. So with that, I will bring it to the board for a motion.
I'd like to move-
I'd like to move that we will tentatively deny this appeal and direct staff to prepare written findings and support.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Townsend, a second by Supervisor Crocker. Please vote. Motion passes 5-0 unanimously. Thank you for coming today and for participating in this hearing. Appreciate both parties and their patience as we've navigated through our agenda. We will now move on and take up our next open session item, which is item 23. It's a request from the Auditor and Controller Department to select the highest cost of living factor to be used in the 2020-2021 GAN appropriations limit calculation from these two options. Cass, save me before I start reading more.
You did it.
I'm done. You got it.
[laughing]. Is this an annual process to determine the growth rate to the appropriations limit?
We're listening.
Okay, sorry. It started back in the 70s, California Code. We adopt this annually. There's two choices based on personal income growth or assessed value of non-residential properties. We suggest that you go with the higher of the two. And then this goes in line with the budget, the fiscal year 2021 budget. It's a simple item.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members or members of the public? Sure, go ahead, Supervisor Crocker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, we've, I've said this before and so it's nothing new. I know that staff's recommendation is to take the higher amount. And ultimately, I don't think it, I don't care one way or the other, but I just feel like, you know, if we don't really need the higher amount, then what's the point? And we had this discussion last year, so I'm going to make that comment again. I think option one is preferable to option two, but I will be happy to go along with the pleasure of the board.
Okay. If there's nothing further, I will bring it to the board for direction and action. Staff recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. And we have a motion to approve the staff recommendation by Supervisor Shuckley and second by Supervisor Valero. Please vote. Motion passes unanimously. We will now move on to item 24. Thank you, Cass, for your patience this morning. Item 24, board members may make a referral to staff to have a matter of business considered for a future agenda. Are there any such requests today? Seeing none, I look to counsel. Do we have need for closed session?
I can see what's already heard and they're reported out. Item A. The remainder?
Okay, thank you for attending today's meeting. Stay healthy and safe. Meeting adjourned to closed session.